Good evening. Welcome to the January fourteenth Waschugle City Council Workshop Meeting. Rose, could you call the --
Councilmember Boger, Councilmember Plinsky, Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. My understanding is that Councilmember Freeman will not be in attendance this evening, and we should be joined shortly by Councilmembers Plinsky and Boger. With that, we will start with public comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address council this evening?
Will there be an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to talk about the utility rate increases after discussion of that ordinance, or now?
What would probably be best is if we held those for the information that we've got coming in, then we've got public comments at the end of the meeting as well, so, and that'll be after the discussion takes part. Anybody else that would like to address council?
We're with the Relay for Life, we're not sure when we should jump in. Now?
Sure, come on up, Janice.
Okay, Janice, that was twenty-seven ten East Street, Waschugle. I just had a suggestion. People are telling me that if you had the meeting at seven o'clock instead of six o'clock, those people that are working can get home and come to the meeting. That's my only comment for right now, okay?
Thank you, Janice. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, I'm Dawn Holene, and I'm with the Relay for Life. And first off, we just want to say thank you for letting us come back to Waschugle again this year. We will be at the high school. Real quick, we wanted to kind of go over a little bit of what we are and what we do, and to make sure everyone gets invited to come out. We will be having our big kickoff, January the twenty-fourth, at the Paper Mill. I think it's Georgia Pacific now. We want to invite you to that. Real quick, Relay is where we walk for twenty-four hours, because cancer never sleeps, in case you don't know about what we do. The history, real quick. Dr. Gordy Klatt walked for twenty-four hours in nineteen eighty-five of May, raising twenty-seven thousand dollars, and that's how we started. One man made a difference. So we've been following him on that. We have a survivors' lap. We invite all the survivors to come out, and it's free. They don't have to pay anything to be part of the event. And they get to walk around, they open the ceremony, and the most of the day is done kind of for them. They get to have a free luncheon, and lots have done for them. In the evening, we have a luminaria ceremony, where bags are lining the entire track with candles, and it represents people that are fighting, or maybe have lost their battle to cancer, and it's kind of a big memorial service kind of thing for them, just memory, walk in silence while music plays. All the money raised goes to research and education prevention, and patient services, and advocacy, and a lot of it does go back to the local areas. We have all kinds of resources for wigs, gas certificates for drives back and forth. So that's just real quick about what we do, and we have some flyers tonight if anybody's interested in maybe joining a team, or being part of the event, just to volunteer. Come and see me, and I have all kinds of information for you.
Dawn, the actual event date this year, June?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous. It's the twenty-second, twenty-third of June at the high school, starts at ten a.m. And again, on the twenty-fourth of this month, if you want more information at our big kickoff, we'd especially like to invite the council to come to that. It's a huge evening with music, and just pumps you up for the year. We go over what we do, who we are, I mean, it's in big, big details. I mean, I'm in a purple tutu, okay? So it's, it's an awesome, awesome thing, so please join us that night if you can.
And what time is that?
That starts at seven p.m.
And what date?
That is June the twenty-fourth, or I'm sorry, January the twenty-fourth, January twenty-fourth for the kickoff.
And you said seven?
Seven p.m., uh-huh. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to address council?
Hi there, Bill Dergan, two twenty-one thirteenth Street, Waschugle. Just wanted to thank you all for backing that traffic up all the way down East Street. That was just an excellent choice. Backs up Clear Pass Highway fuel now, it used to flow pretty good, so I don't know what your modifications really improved, because I don't see it.
Thank you, Bill.
My name is Ray Lonnie, at nine forty-five thirty-ninth Street. I would like to congratulate Waschugle as a, as a school and public. Do you know that this year during our VFW essay contest, that we whipped tail? We got about two-thirds of all the honors through our local district, our local post, and district got about half of them from our school. So congratulations to everyone that has their children in our school district.
Awesome. Thank you for letting us know that.
Anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, not your last opportunity, we'll have one towards the end of the meeting as well. At this point, we are going to go into a presentation on our strategic planning, and just a quick note for folks, after that, I am going to adjust the agenda a little bit. We, we need to get one of our staff members out of here a little bit sooner this evening, so right after strategic planning, we will take up the community development item, and then come back to the BPA discussion. Trevor, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having the strategic planning staff, myself, Trevor Evers, Public Works Director for the city of Waschugle, Darlene Stickell, Support Staff in the Strategic Plan, Joshua Banks, Waschugle High School Senior, and Terry Babin, Retired Marine Corps. Thank you for joining us. Can everyone hear me okay, as far as this distance? Yes? Good. All right, so we have covered the introductions, and we will be moving into the plan components, the foundation of what has emerged in the strategic plan roadmap, working through the vision, values, and mission, and the SWAC analysis, which is short for Strength, Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Challenges. This is also a little bit of a refresher from the joint workshop that was conducted in August over at the community center. And then we'll be moving into the priority pillars, or goals, and then open discussion and Q and A, question and answer. So with the strategic plan initiative, you'll see slides that come across from PowerPoints that date back to March of two thousand twelve. So each PowerPoint slide cover sheet really resembles two hours of physical meeting for the advisory committee, the nine-member committee. So starting in March of, in March, on March twenty-second through October twenty-fifth, a total of seventeen meetings physically, and rule of thumb, however many hours you spend in the classroom, or volunteering, you spend at least that much working on the assignments that were also attached to this volunteer effort. So we're estimating close to five hundred hours of volunteer effort from the advisory committee. Very thankful for that. So getting into the building blocks, the public input, dating back to the public engagement campaign that was conducted in the summer and fall of two thousand eleven, which included workshops, coffee conversations in the morning, we had meetings down at the Best Western Hotel, as well as up at the Waschugle High School, different times and dates and locations for people to engage, and be able to converse with staff on what they felt Waschugle should be in the future as far as vision and priorities. Mission statement, why we exist, and we also work through the vision and values, the values both internally and externally, as an organization and as a community. So you'll see on the PowerPoint, the one-stop shopping, we call it, for the vision for Waschugle, the community values, as well as the organizational values, and the mission, why we exist. And I'll go ahead and read the vision and mission. Waschugle will be a safe, healthy, and economically vibrant community that balances growth and expanding opportunity while preserving the best qualities of small-town living. The mission is to provide leadership and effective, fiscally responsible services that achieves our community's vision. And again, the values, the organizational or internal, and the community values, obviously, are the community values. So the SWAC analysis has two different lenses, if you will. The internal lens is identifying strengths and weaknesses within the organization. The external is the environment outside of the organization. And again, this is a refresher from the joint workshop in August, but as you see through the bullets, there's specific strengths and weaknesses internally, and there's also opportunities and challenges. The idea is to be able to leverage strengths, to realize and move opportunities across the line to fruition, and to use strengths to mitigate weaknesses and mitigate challenges as well. I think you'll see in some of the challenges specifically around railroad tracks and SR-14, some physical barriers, things that we talk about, but formally putting it into a challenge, into a SWAC analysis was the intent. So at this point, this has come to fruition since the joint workshop in August, the priorities. And for priorities, the title of them are pillars, and there are four pillars specifically: communication, community engagement, core services, and economic development. Joshua Banks is going to assist with the communication pillar.
Hi, I'm Joshua Banks. I'm a senior at Waschugle High School. Throughout the plan, I tried to supply, you know, a youth perspective, because for the plan to be successful in the future, I feel like it's really important that the youth is involved, especially since the youth are gonna, is gonna be affected with the plan in the future. For communication, our priority goal pillar was to provide open and accountable city government through effective communication to foster citizen participation. We had thirty-two original recommended strategies to do this, and we took seven that we thought were especially vital to the goal, to the communication goal. The first is to enhance communication methods to provide information to the widest possible audience. This means utilizing social media sites like Facebook and Twitter and RSS feeds, while also utilizing current means of communication, like the city website. I feel like it's very important to utilize those sites, because the younger generation really does rely on those means of communication to get their information. Being a teenager, I really do use, you know, Facebook and Twitter to keep up to date with all the current information, because we just don't watch the news as much and read the newspaper as much, unfortunately. The second recommended strategy is to consider adding a public information officer to promote communication and foster citizen initiatives. This means having one person dedicated to streamlining information effectively to citizens of Waschugle. The third recommended strategy is to regularly solicit citizens by using surveys and other community outreach efforts. This can be done largely through going to community events, like Waschugle High School football games and basketball games, because such a large amount of population goes to those events, and it's an excellent opportunity to obtain valuable feedback on city government. The fourth recommended strategy is to provide current, accurate, and concise information on Waschugle initiatives, city services, local issues, and events. The fifth recommended strategy is to report to the community annually on progress toward achieving strategic goals. This means telling the story of the strategic plan, so it doesn't just sit on the shelf, but so the citizens of Waschugle know that the plan is being utilized and is active. The sixth recommended strategy is to develop public and private sector partnerships and strategic alliances to provide services and promote public involvement. This means utilizing public resources and private resources so that they're used more effectively. The last recommended strategy is to enhance city government's transparency, accountability, and visibility through effective communication and active participation in the community. This again means using social media to provide transparent information consistently. We had nineteen recommended indicators to monitor progress, but we chose six that we found were especially important to the plan's success. The first is to increase the number of hits to the city websites and other social media websites. This means establishing a baseline of how many hits we are achieving right now, and working to increase those hits as time progresses. The second recommended indicator to monitor progress is annual strategic goal status report cards to the community. This means, again, telling the success of the strategic plan and communicating how the plan is coming along and how it's working out. The next recommended indicator is clean audit reports. This happens annually already, but not enough information, not enough attention is brought to them. The fourth recommended indicator is the survey results from periodic citizen and business surveys. The fifth is an increased number of responses to surveys, and the last recommended indicator to monitor progress is to increase the number of partnerships. Thank you.
I would like to talk to you about the priority goal pillar number two, and it's about community engagement. And the strategies that the committee came up with to achieve this goal included actively support and promote community volunteerism, and underneath that, they wanted to recommend that the city have a seamless web interconnection between the city and service agencies that would help to promote and encourage local volunteers. Perhaps ways to celebrate citizen, student, and community engagement through service recognitions, or website announcements, social media, and annual meritorious service pronouncements, partner with local organizations to increase opportunities for special populations, and perhaps promoting and expanding local community activities that then encourage volunteerism, especially through the Waschugle High School. The second recommended strategy was to promote K through twelve academic learning through intentionally designed projects that would help to develop future community leaders, and support local services, excuse me, support local services such as food and clothing drives, youth, seniors, and to support other special populations. The third would be to expand the Waschugle Community Center and other city-owned facilities to include youth, citizens, seniors, and special populations. Fourth would be to support and promote events and activities at the park, at parks, community center, and other appropriate locations that provide an outlet for Waschugle's youth. Fifth would be to meet quarterly, to institute a quarterly meet and greet gathering for new community members. You could also partner with nonprofit and other local organizations on meaningful initiatives to bring people together in the community. One of the most important community engagement initiatives or strategies was to help foster a small-town feel. More often than not, respondents to the surveys, in the SWAC analysis, et cetera, want to maintain that small-town feel. And lastly, promote citizen participation and community involvement with a, with an emphasis on youth and seniors, and most especially getting youth and seniors to help each other. Now, the recommended indicators to monitor progress would be perhaps increased amount of volunteers within the community, increased number of attendees at city-sponsored and community events, increased attendance at the Waschugle Community Center, and increased percentage of citizens who report in a citizen survey that Waschugle is a welcoming and friendly community. And then increased number of partnerships to community-sponsored events. Now, one of the things that really is inherent in community engagement is if it's used wisely, directed efforts can encourage and enhance community engagement, raise social consciousness, and certainly support close-to-the-heart initiatives. Doing so will build stronger and more loyal relationships, and certainly provide value that flows in both directions. Thank you.
Up next is Terry Babin. He'll be covering the core services pillar. I just wanted to clarify, the strategies that are being identified and brought to you via narrative is also in the document, the physical document in the drop box specifically for council, and ultimately, it'll be on the website for review as well.
I'm going to actually be covering two pillars, number three and number four, but I think it might be worthwhile, because there's so many in here who may not be familiar with the process, to just backtrack a little bit and let you know that the strategic planning horizon we're talking about is only about seven to ten years. Now, most strategies cover twenty to twenty-five years, but there's so much uncertainty out there right now, that we decided that what we really wanted to do was give guidance, strategic guidance, to set a foundation for the future, realizing that we can't probably accomplish a lot in terms of end results, but we can certainly set the stage for a lot of things. The second thing is, we were also very conscious of the fact that it's tough economic times. So we were very careful, particularly when we get to core services and economic development, to look at strategic elements that not require a lot of investment, particularly on the front end. As a matter of fact, we, we stated many of our strategic elements in such a way that hopefully the city's leaders and staff will look for windows of opportunity. In other words, they kind of have a playbook, and it's just like a football game, you're gonna, you're gonna look for the right situation to make the right call. And that's how we developed this. The other thing is, if you notice, we didn't say priority one, two, three, and four, as in one's most important. That's because, once again, you're gonna have to look at targets of opportunity. You're gonna have to say, all right, here's the things we can do right now, here's some things that we'd like to do now, but we may have to delay, because it's just, the timing's not right, we don't have the contacts, wherever. So I just wanted to put that into context of what was going on. Later on, after I do the pillars, it will be explained to you the implementation phase, what this all means. But one of the questions that came up at the last workshop was, you have a broad mission statement, which was given, but, but that's not anything that departments can act on. But the strategic elements that Joshua already covered, and Darlene already covered, those pieces can constitute the mission statements for various departments. They may have more than one mission, depending on how the work is distributed to execute the strategy. So with that, let me get to pillars three and four. Core services, first of all, we did not try to define what ought to be core services. That's a policy decision. What we said was, whatever the city believes ought to be the core services, it has to be delivered in a quality way at a reasonable cost. So here's the pillars, and kind of bear with me, because it gave me really small print, and my eyes just aren't what they used to be. But here are the recommended strategies under core services. First of all, professional management of the city. This means to establish essential internal lines of authority, responsibility, accountability, procedures, processes, reviews, and incentives to continue the development. In other words, basically, it says, you not only have to have a plan, somebody's gotta be responsible, somebody ought to, needs to be accountable, and their evaluations and performance and even promotions ought to be based on whether they get results. The next thing was, is that there needs to be adequate budgetary support, manpower and facilities, training our staff, as well as essential equipment and technologies. One of the challenges for the city is economies of scale. Waschugle is not that big. You're already doing things to take a look at partnering throughout the broader area that needs to continue. The next thing was to maintain policies which recruit and retain talented and high-performing personnel. Continuity is critical. Need to establish growth management practices which require upgrading, modernizing, and or replacing existing developed areas and structures before any further expansion except for light and heavy industry. Improve multimodal, multimodal transportation. Provide quality streets and control systems for the efficient movement of traffic. Partner with C-Tran to enhance public transportation opportunities in Waschugle, and connectivity to regional transportation systems, and invest in public infrastructure to meet future capital improvement needs of a growing community. Set development fees to ensure a fair balance between private and public benefits derived by residential and commercial development. Promote and increase community-based partnerships for code enforcement, crime prevention, fire and life-saving emergency preparedness. Ensure a safe community by providing appropriate service levels for public safety, and establish intergovernment relations, which is already ongoing, with other local and regional jurisdictions to influence issues outside of the responsibility of municipal government, but important to quality of life in our community. And part of that ties right back to the first two pillars, where we identified that an aging population, as well as our youth, and also our disabled, that we need to keep those three subsets of our population particularly visible in our core services, and ensuring our partnerships also address those services. Next is pillar four, which is economic development. Strengthen the local economy through recruitment, expansion, retention, and support for new businesses in Waschugle. Implement incentives to encourage retention in and relocation to Waschugle. Streamline and simplify the permitting process and requirements. Actively support workforce development by partnering with local education institutions. Inventory the area to determine economic development focus and opportunities in terms of business density, building availability, and property mix. And this last point was a matter of considerable discussion in the committee. And that is, one of the, one of the things that the community has been very clear about is we need good jobs here in Waschugle, not where people don't have to commute. We need good entry-level jobs, and we need good family-supporting jobs. Part of that can come from industrial development, such as what's going on with the campus Waschugle Economic Development Agency, and with the port. There's also, of course, the plan that exists for economic development in downtown, but that's retail, and most retail is minimum-wage jobs, as we all know. The retail satisfies the need for local shopping, but one of the things that we identified is that we need to take a look at also encouraging light industry that will be on property that increases the revenue base, because residential property just doesn't pay the cost of doing business if you want to break out of the tight revenue constraints of being a bedroom Market the community as a desirable place to live and do business. I mentioned the partnering. Continue to support redevelopment of the downtown area. Partner with private and public sector to actively market Waschugle as a tourist destination with focus on being the gateway to the gorge, the motocross, parks and wildlife, and waterfront In just kind of a quick summary, both in terms of core services and in terms of economic development, what we're saying is, the goal ought to be balanced, a good mix and a good balance. Thank you.
So after identifying the priorities, the pillars, how do we strategize and execute as far as implementation? So in moving forward, the intent is to keep it a living document, the roadmap, and moving towards implementation. So upon council consideration, there are next steps to measure our progress, and in moving forward in our strategic goals. So to ensure the plan's success, and I think this gives a fairly good illustration on multiple components that feed in to ensuring that the plan is successful. You have competing interests or competing demands, starting from creating goals, and teams, and tasks. teams, and tasks, and integrating it into the budget process, which is a crucial piece in leveraging it as a, as a tool during the budget process. Provide community progress reports. Tell the story. How are we doing? Whether that's quarterly, annually, every other year. Get the word out on the reports. How are we doing on the goals that we've set? Collect and use performance metrics. How do we measure ourself? And developing department business plans, or business plans, within Public Works, Finance, Community Development, Emergency Services, taking a piece of the overarching values, mission, vision, and making it representative of the services that we provide within each department, within the municipality. And then ultimately tying it back to performance management, or performance appraisals for staff, to be able to measure how successful we are. So, there's multiple pieces that going in, that go into making sure that it's successful. So, the execution piece. Identifying strategy projects and aligning with goals. It's really a strategy execution slash alignment challenge. Managing projects and assigning specific individuals with scope on those projects, and then again, measuring and reporting on progress, and of course, rewarding success. Again, alignment, especially during the budget process, being able to use the strategic plan roadmap as a tool in going through budget on an annual basis, and then tying execution results to employee evaluations, tying it back to performance management and performance appraisal needs. And reviewing the plan annually, and update as needed through revisions. As you know, it's a changing environment, somewhat tumultuous, and there's a lot of unknowns. Terry had spoken about a seven to 10-year horizon. The original intent was to look at 30 to 40 years out potentially, when the initiative was kicked off. So, the environment really dictated the horizon that we were looking at for setting goals. And ultimately, communication on every level. So, reaching back to the public engagement campaign that took place in the summer and fall of 2011, just to give a little more context, the original intent was to grasp 5% to 10% feedback from the community. That was achieved in just under 1,400 contacts via surveys, electronic surveys, face-to-face at port concerts, football games, farmer's market, you name it, as well as phone surveys. So, there was a robust public engagement campaign that took place to get feedback from the community, as well as internal and external stakeholders. Business owners, there was a walk-in talk with the business owners, where the city was broke in half at Waschugel River Road, and staff physically went and visited with every business owner in the city, face-to-face. If not the business owner, the staff that was on hand at the time. Community partners, there was multiple presentations that were presented through churches, 501(c)(3)'s, other volunteer efforts throughout the community. Stakeholder interviews, we had internal interviews, as well as external interviews, and city staff, not thanking myself, but other staff that supported in logistics, interviews, setup, breakdown, doing research, pulling historical documents, whatever was needed to be able to move forward in the process. And of course, the Strategic Planning Committee. I also wanted to thank specifically three members of the team. Betsy Williams assisted in the facilitation of the roadmap and working with the advisory committee through every one of the meetings that were illustrated earlier, all 17 meetings, as well as Ariana Nasib, intern from the University of Portland, assisted in the public engagement campaign in the summer and fall of 2011, as well as Joanne Boyes, city staff, assisted with the public engagement campaign, as well as the historical document compilation. So, some sample question and answer, what comes to mind. How often will we update it? We've thrown out annually, you know, is that realistic, given resources that are available? What does Phase Two look like? How will we inform and engage others? How do we tell that story and/or report to the community? How do we build momentum? Obviously, Phase One is coming close to conclusion and picking up Phase Two implementation. How do we keep the momentum and keep it from landing on the shelf and collecting dust? Keep it a living document. And then a few other thoughts around priority, the pillars themselves. Again, they're not ranked in a one-through-four order on importance, all of similar importance. And the community values that are identified, how does, how does that look? So, in adoption of the plan, adoption slash acknowledgement or approval in moving forward via either a resolution or another acknowledgement vehicle. Examine the city council engagement opportunities, and then opportunities for the advisory committee to continue to volunteer and/or support the project in the implementation phase. So, we blew right past the question and answer, and the intent was to have some engagement and discussion around some of those questions, just to have conversation and Q and A. There's a few more slides in the, in the deck, but they're really more informational, as far as where documents are at, and moving forward in the implementation phase. So, I would encourage any, any questions at this point, clarifications. Just to clarify for those in the audience tonight, late last week, utilizing our Dropbox, electronic documents box, I sent the whole plan, as well as the appendices and the picture credits to council. So, at this point, they have much more information than those in attendance, just to clarify.
Counsel, questions, comments?
You flip back to the Q and A.
Paul?
Just a couple of questions. I'd kind of like to discuss this with some community members myself. Is this a document that is far enough along that I can take it out and show it to people and talk to them about it?
I believe the document that was put in the Dropbox was stamped draft. Obviously, it has not gone before a council for approval and/or adoption or acknowledgement. But yeah, the intent was, once it was approved, to get it on the website and the links to be able to route it to the community and all the stakeholders.
What I'm kind of hoping to do is, is to talk to some people about it while it's still in draft form, before it's adopted, so that I can get some feedback, basically. So, that's, that's kind of what I was hoping to do. And, and then, secondly, I, you know, I... Ever since I've been on council, I've thought a lot about how to improve communication. And I frankly admit that I'm at wits' end. I've tried pretty much everything I can think of. Short of being able to reach out through Portland Television, I don't know how you reach the community with any kind of significant numbers. Yes, it's true that the, that the high school community and the young people will look a lot more at, at the website, or Facebook, or even Twitter, then I, I don't have a Twitter account. I do have Facebook and, and spend a lot of time on the web. If you add up the total reach of the Colombian and the post-record over the course of a month, it's about one in four. So, and newsletters haven't been all that, so they're expensive, and they're really not all that successful, and that most of them end up right in the trash. Nobody looks at them. So, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really interested, I would like to hear some other good ideas. At one point, I even, in the summertime, was over in Hathaway Park every Thursday afternoon at lunchtime, and I did that for two months, and there were two days that people showed So, outreach and, and communication is, I would really like some ideas on how to do Or how will we inform and engage others? Short of me going out and knocking on every door in the city, which I suppose I could do once a year, but you're still not gonna end up, experience is that half the people won't be there, and half of those won't want to talk to you. So, I'm, I'm just kind of casting about here. I, I agree that it's a worthy goal. I'd just like some ideas on how to get there.
Jennifer?
I wanted to talk a little bit about the SWAC analysis, and I'm just kind of going through all of the different boxes, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. And quite frankly, reading over most of these things, I can see definitely where we have our challenges, but I also agree that we're already doing a lot of these things, you know, particularly with the cooperation and communication across departments, and, and with staffing, et cetera, et cetera. And, I mean, I, I look at the goals, the strategic goals, and I can agree with all of them. I mean, I'm just not sure, like Councilwoman Greenlee says, you know, what are the, the suggestions for getting there that we're not already doing, I guess, is, is really what I was hoping to get from all of this, so. I'm sure I'll have more questions, but I'll let someone else.
We took a look at various departmental objectives, and plans, and statements going back to 1962, and the community has been consistent in saying what they want and what needs to be done. Strategy doesn't necessarily point you to a new direction. It may say, let's keep the direction we're going in these areas, let's, let's work out the kinks, and let's get some things done. Quite frankly, going all the way back to 1962, what came out of our public engagement over the last year was very consistent with what happened back in the 60s, and then it seemed like about every 10 years, the city goes through this process. And it's, and it's always the same things, which tells me, at least, and it told the committee, that it's a matter of following through, getting to results. We know what needs to be done, and, and in large part, absolutely agree, and I think the committee would agree, we're really saying that we've all known what needs to be done. So, now, let's get it done.
Mayor, if I could, I thought I would maybe just interject a thought. What are we asking the council to do, and what does that mean? What we're asking you to do is to continue to review the documents that you've got. You haven't had these final documents very long, just this past week. There's a lot of information, we know that, that we went through, and we'd appreciate if you could spend some more time looking at that. Appreciate the comments, councilwoman, about how the goals resonate, and that they make sense. But in your adoption, if we were to bring a resolution, the, what that would really mean is that you were saying, this is the mission of this community and the vision, and that these are our values, and that we are coalescing our goals into these four categories that we're calling the pillars, and that as a council, on behalf of your community, you're embracing that and saying, this is what, this is who we are, this is what we're about, and this is what we're gonna go after. The real key from, and, and then also broadly, the strategies that have been listed, which are still broadly stated. They're not fully fleshed out. And I think, as was just mentioned, the key is then, the implementation of this, and your adoption will symbolically cast us off, if you would, toward implementation, and then we will begin the implementation strategy, and have these areas as priority areas, and then we will come back through that process. And there will be some council role in that, that we haven't fully determined yet, so that we can bring very specific and actionable items forward for the council. And then that's where the tough work begins, to begin to try to prioritize those things, because as, as you've heard, and as you will read, as you get through all of this, there's a lot in there, much of which we are doing, but much of which we know will require resources, time, and attention, which we don't necessarily have to do all of it all at the same time. And so, we have to be very careful and strategic about prioritizing that. So, there's a, a lot of work to be done in terms of implementation, and, and making this just be part of how we, how we do what we do, and how we're gonna measure things for you and for the community. So, we're anticipating, and I think Trevor will probably get to this in, in a few slides, having you have this a little longer, so that you would be ready for action at some point in a meeting to come, where you could say, yes, I'm, I'm willing to say that this is the mission statement for this organi, for this community and its vision, and that these are the values, and these are the four pillar areas that, that we're going after as an organization. And then with that support, then that's what we'll go do.
As we move to the plan adoption, and then revision opportunities, in looking forward to the revisions, obviously, it's a changing environment that we're in, especially post-recession as a country. Also, changing demographics, as well as fiscal constraints, especially from federal government down to state, and then to local municipalities. So, the fiscal piece is, you know, an annual basis, as far as what's being funded, what's not being funded. So, all those things need to be representative in an annual update, if you will, of the strategic plan. Identified weaknesses. Weaknesses may change, strengths may change, priorities may change, so we need to make sure and capture that in future revisions as well, and again, keep it a living document. Resource enhancement issues as well in Phase Two, looking at that with a little closer lens. And then the alignment challenges around trying to move forward with the vision of the community, and allocating resources to deliver on that specifically. And provide stakeholder reporting mechanisms, again, telling the, telling the story of the successes. This is information-based, as far as the documents, where they'll be available, the appendices and photo credits to the city website, once it's adopted, approved, acknowledged. Strategies, key performance indicators are under development, and will be available soon. And the committee's PowerPoint presentations that was shown to illustrate dating back to March through October of this year, every one of those PowerPoints, the working pieces that went through the advisory committee, will be available on the strategic planning website as well, the city's home website. So, in looking forward to the implementation piece, staff has engaged and had entry-level conversation with Portland State University, their Center for Public Service, and specifically their Laboratory of Innovation, which is made up of a diverse group of professionals, both practitioners and academics around public administration, city administrators, management in large and small agencies. So, we've had some entry-level conversations via conference call, as well as face-to-face, in looking at Phase Two, the implementation phase, and defining those specific measures, what Councilmember McDaniel was referencing, of cascading it down throughout the organization, and getting into specifics within each department, and what that, each pillar means, what communication means, and what community... And what that, each pillar means, what communication means, and what community engagement means. And it may look much different for emergency services than it would for public works or community development or finance in looking at each one of those pillars. Working in partnership with Portland State, entry-level communication with staff, the operationalization piece, and looking at getting it implemented. Also, getting a stakeholder analysis and start the goal setting. What are we trying to accomplish and how are we going to get there? It also has a loop-back piece with the community awareness campaign. Obviously, we have multiple citizens and community members in attendance, but many members will not know that the roadmap's been completed, short of getting out and having a campaign to bring it back to them via presentation with different locations Any other questions or clarification at this point in moving through the draft roadmap?
Will we continue to have a strategic planning department, in essence, at this point forward? Does it get turned over to the administration and so on and so forth? I'm just curious to know who's in charge of the strategic plan at this point forward?
I have a draft scope that I'm doing some edits to in between myself and the Center for Public Service. We also have a meeting at administrative level, Mayor Guard and Administrator Scott and Dee and myself are scheduled to meet with the Center for Public Service as well, the Laboratory of Innovation, to talk about what that scope is going to look like and what its intent is, what it's supposed to provide.
That's a different dynamic that I hadn't really considered.
Yeah.
Bringing in, you know, someone from, or a group from academia to take a look at our strategic plan. And will they be comparing this to other cities, or how is this going to work?
It was a competitive process. The Laboratory of Innovation, again, is made up of diverse professionals, public-private sector, practitioners, academics. And so they requested a letter of interest. And so we were not the top choice. There was another municipality that was chosen. And I had further conversation with their project management team about phasing where we're at in the strategic plan process currently, closing out the roadmap, council approval, moving forward with implementation. And they were quite intrigued with the robust public engagement campaign and moving forward with the strategic plan.
I think to answer the part about, you know, how we're deploying our staff, we are, we have already begun, and over the next short term, we'll begin the transition out of having special assignment. As you might recall, the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee expressed fairly serious concern about the capacity of this organization around implementation of the plan. And you heard reference to the plans that have been done in the past. And that is indeed a challenge for any organization to ensure that the plan remains viable and that the plan is used and is informative to everything that we're doing. And what the mayor and I explained to the committee and what we're committed to is to ensure that that doesn't happen this time. And so although we will be transitioning out of special assignment and back to the line and bringing this back into what we're doing, we're looking for every opportunity that we can find for assistance to help us move forward in implementation. And here's Portland State University that has this new center that they've put together, and they've got expertise, academic and otherwise. And they're saying, hey, we'll help you out a little bit. And in fact, so many people were interested in that, you know, we were kind of bummed, but we, you know, we didn't get selected to be the prime, but they're still willing to come alongside us. And so they're going to help us facilitate some of the initial, we're going to take one of the pillars, and we're going to set up the implementation process for that pillar. And they're going to help us, and they're going to facilitate with us working through that process. And then that'll be the model for how we do it with the other three. And I think we're going to work on that first one, that communication one first, I think you mentioned, is that right? Or is it core services? I can't remember which one.
Communication and then moving into the other pillars and framing that up for implementation.
Right.
Using that framework.
Right. So they're offering the help, and we thought it would be a good idea to take advantage of it. So we're thankful to them and the fact that that's a resource that we have regionally that can be of assistance to municipalities. But yeah, this is a very significant milestone in the project, the Phase One completion. It's not complete until, we believe, until the council does take some kind of endorsement action with respect to the plan at this point. And then at that point, that transition, which I said has already started, will happen. And then over the very short term, we'll begin to the implementation stage, but there won't be a special department, so to speak. It'll be just general administrative responsibility. Certainly Trevor will continue to have a role, but so will all the department heads, so will all of the staff. And we'll have to be creative to ensure that we keep this thing going.
Do anyone else want to speak? I feel like I'm monopolizing this conversation.
All right, good.
Okay. One more question. So.
You're asking good questions.
Thank you. You are, in essence, looking for some kind of confirmation from council. Would this be in the form of a resolution, or what are you asking for?
Right. I think we would bring a resolution, and we'd appreciate if you could, we know it's a lot of information. I think the mission and the vision and the values and the pillars is pretty straightforward. You know, we have the executive summary, and I think you've seen all of that before. The pieces that are a little more involved and were unveiled to you just this past week in the Dropbox are the bulleted objectives and strategies underneath each of the pillars, some of the potential metrics and measures we'll use. And in your adoption, keep in mind that those are, you know, broadly stated strategies that we'll go after, and the council's action is a broadly stated action, that this is what we're doing. You wouldn't be adopting, you know, we're going to do these metrics, but we're not going to do those metrics. It's broad direction. So we'll come back at a workshop coming up soon and see if you have any additional questions at that time. We can have a draft resolution for you to look at that would articulate your support for the plan. And if there's any feedback at that point, then we'd loop that back in and then ultimately come back for your action with a resolution.
Are there questions, comments from council? In the meantime, before we get to that formal process at workshops and then at council, I would certainly encourage you, as you go through the documents, if you've got questions, make sure and write those down. Get in touch with Trevor, get in touch with Dave. Try and work through some of those, any suggestions that you've got, any things that you may think of that something ties together, but it just clearly isn't spelled out in there. We can certainly look at those and go over those as we develop the very final pieces. I think that one of, Paul, you asked the question or made the statement in regards to communications and those type of things, and you're going to find that in a lot of these pieces. As Dave said, this is fairly broad in some of the respects that it's written. I don't know, well, I do know. I don't believe that there is any special thing out there that is going to cause us to increase the effectiveness of communications from this city to our constituents, at least in terms of the way they get the messages and the information and go through it. I think there are a whole bunch of them. It's not the Post Record, it's not the Columbia, it's not our website, it's not Facebook. It's all of those pieces. And in a lot of this stuff, really what our goal is, is to get as absolutely close as we can to it. So it's repeated efforts, it's continuing to try and firm things up as best we can as we go through them, it's continuing to try and find better communication ways, just as it is to find better ways for us to operate through our emergency departments, through our finance departments. It's, this thing is meant to grow along with the city, and is also meant to recognize that as we achieve some of those things, to look beyond it a little bit farther as well. So I guess my message would be, don't get hung up on the general pieces of it, because truly, that's what we're looking to find, is where we need to begin moving that direction. And then through the help of PSU and our folks, before we finish up the final pieces of the plan itself and actually really begin the implementation, taking those down to department goals themselves that get right back to those general areas, then it truly is on us all, staff and council, to make sure that we're continuing to look back at that and that we're continuing to try and achieve those. Mark them off, update them, add things to as things fall off, and keep the city on a home, moving in a positive direction rather than just going by whatever we can do in a given year's budget and calling that good and not looking forward. Trevor, any final comments? Darlene, any? Terry?
We've started the research process on the implementation phase, and I've also had those conversations with Portland State University. So we've been running parallel paths regardless of when there's formal action as far as resolution or acknowledgement. We're still moving in that implementation phase. So, moving forward.
Thank you for all your work to this point. Terry, thank you very much for your dedication to this process. It's a lot of meetings, it's a lot of hours.
And I'd really like to second that. This clearly represents a huge amount, not only of time, but real skull sweat. And so I want to thank you and you and all of the members of your committee and the staff and the interns and everybody who has put heart and soul into this for months and months and months. I really want to thank you.
Mitch? Sorry to wake you up there. Okay, we've got a public hearing coming up on a development agreement with the Schmidt
Thank you very much, Your Honor and Council, especially for taking me out of order. I do appreciate that. The agenda bill before you this evening is related to a development agreement between the Schmidt CR LLC, Emma Schmidt, and us as a municipality. The agreement simply would vest the subject properties to the development standards in place on the date of the agreement, similar to the recent development agreements that we've done with the port. In addition, the city, as part of this development agreement, would receive an easement for public access trail across these properties. The properties in question are highlighted here. There are six properties along the Columbia River just south of SR14 at the easterly extension of South A Street. And you can see, and that's not working, you can see, and then the intersection of Washego River Road and SR14. The trail, yeah.
Mitch, let's give it just a second.
I'm sorry.
I want to make sure everybody gets your presentation.
Okay. The trail itself would, like I mentioned, would span the entirety of these properties. I did note that in the development agreement, that the exact, it's representative, representation of where that trail would be, the exact final location will be done during the design phase, so we can minimize impacts to trees and whatnot. But this would make the trail connection between our Dyke Trail over to South A Street and then obviously down to South A Street, down to the port, where we're working on, the port's working on some waterfront development, potential development there. So the recommended action for this agenda bill is to make a motion to set a public hearing for February 4th, 2013, at 6:00 PM to consider adoption of the development agreement between Schmidt CR LLC, Emma Schmidt, and the City of Washego through approval of the consent agenda. That's it.
Questions from council? Joyce?
I would just like, on this map that we have, is the trail going at the back of the property?
It's going on the north side of the properties.
Like along 14?
And again, it would probably meander, it wouldn't be that straight line like that we were trying to, at the time of development, we'll look at trees and whatnot and have it surveyed in.
And that connects into Steamboat Land?
Yes, it does.
And just so you know, because I've been going to port meetings, the port, the old Hamilton lumber mill property, the port is committed to having waterfront access along that entire property. And then bringing a trail out to South A Street, actually, it's more complicated than that, but basically, South A Street. There are also, we're also working on a connection between the Marina Trail and the park over there and Goot Park in Camas, which is just across, that's just north on SR14 of that. And Goot Park is connected by a trail and a pedestrian bridge over the river, up along Lackamas Creek, all the way up to Lackamas Lake and the Lackamas Heritage Trail. So the hope is that in a very few years, there will be a trail connection from Camas Meadows all the way out to the end of the Dyke.
Other council questions, comments? Okay, so Mitch will be back to us on the fourth.
I'm sorry. Mitch, did you say residential or retail?
It's residential.
Residential?
Yeah, single family.
I was looking at the presentation I saw, retail, I'm sorry.
If it was retail, that is an error, if it's anywhere in there.
It says, purpose to provide additional opportunities for retail sales tax, ongoing revenue to city.
Where's?
That is on the first slide, at the bottom of that, the one I have on my computer. It's maybe just an error on my, on my. But it's residential, so you can confirm that?
It is residential, yes. And it will be back, it'll be back next Tuesday, the 22nd, on consent, to set the hearing, and then we'll have a work session on.
Fourth.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other council questions, comments? Mitch, thank you.
Thank you.
Brent, welcome.
Thank you. I had a business conflict.
Okay, going to our second presentation this evening, the BPA I-5 corridor reinforcement project update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We thought it would be appropriate to give you a brief update on BPA's I-5 corridor reinforcement project, particularly since the BPA was in our community last Thursday for a public comment session at a middle school in Camas that was fairly well-attended by our neighbors. And this is a very significant project that will have, we believe, some significant impact in the community. And so I thought we'd kind of bring you up to speed. You're familiar with it generally, but we're starting to get into the home stretch with the project. So we'll talk, just give an overview of the project to get us all back on the same page. Some of the details in Washego, what it means for us specifically and what those impacts are for us, what our advocacy is and will continue to be, and what our next steps are as we work through the process with the BPA. As you may recall, the general purpose of this BPA I-5 corridor reinforcement project is to serve the growing demand for power in our region. And they're basically adding a 500-kilovolt transmission line to the existing facilities that they have. I'm not an electrical engineer, but I think that's a big number. So this is a very significant project. As with any project of this magnitude undertaken by a federal agency, they have to go through the National Environmental Policy Act process. It's the NEPA. It rhymes with CIP. It rhymes with CIPA, and you may be familiar with our own CIPA process, the State Environmental Policy Act. This is really our only opportunity as a community to try to influence or affect how BPA will deliver this project. So it's a very, very important process. And the stage of the process that's happening right now is that the draft environmental impact statement, the DEIS, is out for comment, for formal comment. We were commenting before they put the draft together, but now it's formally out for comment, and those comments are due by the end of next month. Part of their comment gathering process is these public meetings, of which they held one in our community, which was greatly appreciated. The NEPA requires that alternatives be considered, and so they have five alternatives, and they're basically routes to get this power from up in the Castle Rock area, down this way, across the river, the Columbia River ultimately, and over to Troutdale. And I'll show you a map of all of that in just a bit. So there are four routes that were, that are under consideration, and then, as always, in an EIS process, there's the no-action alternative, which means they wouldn't do it. And you always have to have that as a baseline. They have also identified a preferred alternative, which is part of the process, and they're calling it the central route. And in just a moment, I'll show you the map for that. And on the presentation, for anyone that's interested, is the link to the project site. I'm about to hop onto the Internet and we'll start to use their site and look at some of the information that's on it. They have an excellent website for the project, and really, everything you could ever want to know about it is really there. So instead of recreating that, we're just going to use their website. So hopefully, this is going to happen. Okay. BPA.gov is their website. This is their homepage. This is BPA's homepage. And in addition to seeing that they're turning 75, you can click on their projects and initiatives link right there, and then you can go to initiatives or projects, go to the projects. You see that they have three projects going on, and the one we're interested in, of course, is the I-5 corridor reinforcement project. And there you have their base information on the base screen for the project. You can see the open house that happened on January 10th. You can navigate all over the place using the links on the left side under I-5 corridor reinforcement. I won't go through those links, I've already opened some of them up just to try to save time. So we're going to go to, actually, I will just show you so that you can see how you get to those. If you, all kinds of things, but if you go to the draft EIS, you'll open up that page, and it's not one big giant document. There are multiple links to, as you can see, many, many chapters. Then there are appendices, many appendices, and many maps. The map that we're going to be looking at is map 1-1, which is Alternatives and Options. Have that open here. I'll try to get a different ratio, aspect on it so it's easier to see. See if I can hold that. So up at the top, to the north, you can see Castle Rock, the Longview Kelso area, and just north of that, a couple substations up there. And then you see down at the bottom, you see Troutdale and another substation. And then you see a west alternative, a crossover alternative, an east alternative, and the central alternative, which is kind of a pink color. The central alternative is the preferred alternative. Of course, the no-action alternative wouldn't be on the map because they wouldn't do the project. I think what is of considerable note here is that, okay, it doesn't work that way, never mind, is that all alternatives come right through our community. You can see all of the alternatives ultimately come down through Waschugle and Camas, across the river, and over to the new substation in Troutdale. So we will be impacted, if they do the project, whichever alternative of the four they pick, we will be impacted the same in each of the alternatives. But just so that you have a more regional perspective on it, you can see where they've selected their preferred alternative.
Which, once again, is the central, is the central alternative? Marked as central?
Central is the preferred alternative. It was in pink.
Okay. Now, in the comment process in the NEPA, they, and I've dealt with this in other contexts, they can't unreasonably restrict consideration of alternatives. Could someone comment, I hope that, you know, could they consider an alternative that did not involve coming through our community?
We have asserted that, as has Camas and I believe others. In the DEIS, they have treated that. They talked about, I forget what they called it, it's not shown here, but it was the go way out east and in, north of the scenic area and come down way out east and go that way. There was another one that really stayed to the west and went through Portland. They talk about that. So that is in the DEIS, it did not, they did not become studied alternatives, and therefore, obviously, didn't become preferred alternatives. When we get to the advocacy part of the presentation in a little bit, we'll talk about how we continue to press that point. So I thought the next thing that would be good to look at would be, what is this thing going to look like as it comes into our community? So again, we'll turn to the BPA website, and we will look at Appendix B. So on that, on that one page of their website where there were many, many, many links, Appendix B is one of those links. And what Appendix B does, I've already gone to page 23, 24 of 27 of that appendice, or that appendix, but it tabulates, and then in this graphic presentation shows what will happen for different segments. And you know what? I wanted to do one other thing before we get to this. There's another tool on their website that was on the left side of their main page. It's an interactive map. It's basically like Google Maps, and you can zoom in. So I'm going to go ahead and just do that for us and zoom in in our area so you can see what's going to happen. You can see the different routes shown there. The preferred alternative is the purple one. See how fast the wireless is in here? Doing all right?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Was it the west alternative that our neighbors in Camas did not want?
Yeah, I can, I can pull that map up again for you. If you see the yellow, which I believe, yes, was the west alternative. In the west alternative, you see the line coming across from Minnehaha, and then it begins to go southeasterly and cuts down just to the northeast of Lackamas Lake. And you see that it's in that brown shaded area, which is an indication of urban area. That's the next area that Camas is intending to develop. To them, to us, it's the areas in our urban area to the north and to the northeast of town, this is a similar type of area for them. They're very vested in bringing that online, like we are for our future growth, and that would have had a big impact there. And so the BPA did listen to that advocacy in their choice of a preferred alternative. But all of the alternatives come down Woodburn Hill and across the river. So that is good news, and I think, you know, we shared in that advocacy with them, and we appreciate the BPA giving consideration to avoiding as much of the urban area as possible. But it, I think I should further elaborate, it's kind of getting ahead to the advocacy, but when you look at this map and the urban areas are in the brown color, that pink line is not in an urban area at all, anywhere, until you get down here to our community. So we think that deserves unique consideration by the BPA, and that's sort of the premise for our advocacy. There are other very special places that these lines will go through that also deserve unique consideration, environmentally sensitive areas and the like, but our urban context, we think, is very unique. So yes, they did listen to that. So back to the interactive map, I'm not sure how well that shows up, but you can see kind of a purple-colored 52 there. This lower segment, which comes down Woodburn Hill, is segment 52, and it's the focus of our advocacy because it is the segment that comes through our community. And I'm going to get even closer, so if you would go to this website at home, you can get significant detail about what's going to happen. And so at a very broad level, I will bring it up to the top of the hill. And you see at the top there, there's number 52/4. The 52 is the segment, and the number after the slash is a tower number. So 52, actually, the segment goes up through our urban area, up north of town, until it intersects 51, segment 51 of the preferred alternative. So we're interested in all of 52 as it comes down, towers 52-2 and 3 and 52-4. Tower 50, there are towers at the location of 52-4. If you were to stand down at the port and look up at Woodburn Hill and right at the crown, the crest of the hill there, you see two big towers. Those are existing towers. That's where this would be at 52-4. As you come down the hill through, past Lookout and Granite Highlands there, you come down to 52-5. A little bit further down, tucked in there is 52-6, and then all the way down the hill to 52-7, near the storage business, across the Waschugle River, to 52-8, down through Goot Park, to 52-9, Killian Development, 52-10, and then 52-11. And then it head, starts to head west along some of that residential area, 52-12, 52-13, and 14, and 15, and then it hops across the river. And kind of out of our, out of our context. But that's, that's where the project is. So if you live anywhere near this, or, you know, you're just observing it from down around the 14, you can know exactly where this is happening. The BPA has an easement, they have significant facility there, they have some towers, and they're proposing that the new towers basically go right where, generally, right where the existing towers are. So I'll show you now exactly what that configuration's going to look like and what the impact of that is going to be. So the first part of this, figure B-23, Route Segment 52, you see it's describing towers 52-1 and 2, which were up above in, in our urban area, and then 52-9 through 17, which are at the bottom of the hill and heading west through Camas there along the Highway 14. And what's going to happen there is, you can see the existing configuration. There are two single-circuit 230-kilovolt circuits, and there's two towers, and they range from 60 to 80 feet high. I don't know exactly how high they are. I've heard they're in the 75-foot range. But that's what's out there right now. When they're done, if they do the preferred alternative, it'll be a little different. Both of those towers will be eliminated, and the one on the left will take the place of those two 230-kilovolt circuits. It'll be a double-circuit tower, so the existing capacity's not going away, it's staying there. And then the new circuit, the whole reason for the project, a single 500-kilovolt tower. And you can see that the heights vary from 120 to 160 feet, so basically, they're twice as high as what's there right now. So the towers will be twice as high as they currently are, in the exact, basically, in the exact same location.
David, if you go back to the split screen, is it, are they, are those to scale?
I would say those are to scale, absolutely. They look about twice as high. Yep, yep. This, this part right here shows what most of us might be familiar with on our Woodburn Hill. We know that there's existing, a much smaller facility for some local utilities, a wooden facility there on the far east side. That's not going to go anywhere. It's called the North Camas Oak Park, 115 KV single-circuit structure. And then you've got the existing double, two circuits of 230K. That's what's there right now. It's no different than up at the top, at the crest of the hill, except for that added wooden 115 KV, wooden towered 150 KV circuit. So same as what you just looked at, except that wooden one is there. So that's what it's going to look like on Woodburn Hill, coming down the hill. And then as you get down to the bottom of the hill and start to head over through Camas, again, it will be, those small wooden towers aren't there, so it'll be this before and after again. And then when it get, it will get really, really big, but it's not really dramatic. And this is when you start to get closer to the mill and getting ready to go across the river. You can see that the existing, this is all looking toward Troutdale, you can see at the top there, the existing number of towers and the existing height of those towers is significant. There's massive facilities already there. They are up to 260 feet tall, you know, they're going to, getting ready to hop across the river. It's got to be way up. So the only thing that's going to hap, the only thing that's going to happen is a new single-circuit 250 KV tower. It just needs to be a monster like these other ones and be almost 280 feet high. So the impact there is not really significant relative to what's already there, if you really think about it. The impact is going to be on our Woodburn Hill, the lower part, and at the bottom of the hill, cutting over through that part of Camas, very significant visual impact, if you would, in our community.
To put a fine point on it, do I understand that basically what they're going to do is replace the existing towers with towers that are twice as tall?
Correct.
And that's all?
And that's all. Now, you know, as they do the project, as you can see, little red line means an access road and that it would need to be new. So there'll be little impacts for the person or the property owner that is being immediately and intimately affected by that little red line. That's a significant impact. The total scope of the project, they have some of these access roads that they have to do. I'd invite you to peruse their website. There's a wealth of information. This is a massive document. They give extensive treatment to all of the different things they have to give treatment to. And one of those is visual impacts, and they narrate through their feel for what the visual impacts will be to our community. I would encourage you to read those and comment on your own as citizens of the community, whatever you would like to do. They are interested in your, in your feedback. But I think we have our work cut out for us because all the alternatives, other than the no-action alternative, come right down the hill. So what are we doing in working through this process? As I mentioned, the NEPA process is happening, and we're commenting. We just discussed what the impacts are. There's sort of this three-tiered, it's a real simplification of the environmental review process. Councilman Boger is expert in some of this, and he knows that this is a real simplification of that. However, it can be boiled down to an avoid, and if you can't avoid, then you minimize, and if you can't minimize, then you mitigate. So we'd like them to avoid the impacts completely. And the way that they would avoid, avoid the impacts is to not bring the project down Woodburn Hill and to do one of the other solutions that they dismissed and did not include as a preferred alternative. It's not too late for us to have that advocacy. It's not too late for us to have that advocacy, but I think it is very telling that it's not even an alternative and more telling that it's not a preferred alternative and it doesn't matter anyway, all the alternatives come down our hill.
Prematurely dismissing an alternative is a, is a basis for challenging legally a NEPA document, anticipe document, but I know there are lots of court cases that say consideration of alternatives need not be exhausted. And so, you know, it's not, it's kind of a thing where there's little guidance, but I would say that the fact that they dismiss anything that does not impact Washougal looks a little funny to me. Am I a little funny to a court?
Right, agreed. And we'll have to evaluate, you know, whether or not that's an arena we would want to enter, you know, once-
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that we do that necessarily, but I'm sure others will be, you know, community and environmental groups would be looking at that as well.
Right.
Dave? I was looking at your minimize possibility up there. We had the BPA representative here, their liaison to this project. And I specifically asked the question, what would be the increase in cost for the average customer? The, the increase per kilowatt hour of electricity consumed by the, the entire spectrum of people who use this service if we undergrounded those things coming down off the hill? And they told me they couldn't give me a figure on that. And after researching that, I really don't understand that answer.
Right. I did not see that level. I have not exhaustively reviewed the DEIS. Mitch is helping out with that review. But they did give extensive treatment to the undergrounding concept in an appendix, significant document. The punchline is 10 to 20 times the cost versus not undergrounding, but they did not calculate that into a rate payer impact, when I think-
And that's precisely what, what we need to find out.
Right. They did, one thing that we did notice in, in our advocacy so far, and I think in our continuing advocacy, is they sort of did an all or nothing. We need to double check to make sure that's how they did their analysis, but it looked like they did an all or nothing, underground the whole, the whole thing or not underground the whole thing. And our advocacy is that in areas where they're going through an urban context, it deserves special and unique consideration and that perhaps they ought to give more rigorous analysis to undergrounding just in urban areas, which would basically just be our area. And then you've much reduced the scope of cost increase and then much reduced the potential rate impacts, but we don't have a feel for what they would be even for that.
My objection is that they haven't seriously considered this alternative. And I, I think that's exactly what we need to get them to do. In the urban area, underground the utilities, and they've given themselves, when they say 10 to 20 times the cost, as you point out rightly, we're talking about the entire project. We're not talking about the urban area.
Right.
Which is exclusive to the Washougal Camas area. The other thing is 10 to 20 times is an estimate, gives them 100% leeway. I know that project management is not all that good in the federal government. I used to work for them and I used to be a project manager for the, for the federal government. And at that time, in the eighties, project management was kind of a new discipline. Even so, project management wasn't all that good. I don't see good project management in this. I don't see an effort to work seriously with us on the, the question of undergrounding utilities. Is there anything that we can do about that?
Well, right now, our, our opportunity is our advocacy in commenting on the DEIS and then any advocacy might, we might have administratively or legislatively in engaging the administration of the BPA. Some of that has already happened. I, I think it's safe to say our perception, at least right now in the process, is that this is not something that they want to do and it's not something, institutionally, it's not something that they're doing.
That's nothing new.
Right.
That's been that way from the time that we first talked with them.
Yeah.
They were not willing to seriously consider that as an option and they refused to give us an estimate. Now, they've given us an estimate in the appendix, which is so broad that it's impossible to, to deal with.
Right.
And as you say, it's not what we asked for. It's based on the whole project, not the, the urban area concept.
Right.
I, I would like to get back to them somehow and say, we want you to seriously consider this.
Right.
I'd be happy to be a part of a delegation that went up to talk to the engineers up at BPA. You're going to find the Army Corps of Engineers in there. I'm ex-army, I'll be glad to talk to them.
Thank you. We, we have commented formally and we will further about it and then we'll look at what opportunities there are for, for some of that face-to-face engagement. One of the other things they did talk about, just to be fair to their analysis, it wasn't just a cost-based analysis. They talked a lot about some, some system reliability, O and operations and maintenance, O and M type considerations for undergrounding. We're not electrical engineers, we're not experts in, in this super high voltage transmission. We're just aware that some other parts of the world, there's some innovation around this. And so, we believe more rigorous analysis is absolutely needed.
The Corps of Engineers is very much subject to public opinion. So, Dawn, if you come out and indicate that there are people here that don't think they're dealing with us in good faith, I'm sure that'll catch the attention of their public affairs people and I expect they'll give you a call, Dave.
Yep. Liz has been pretty good to work with at BPA, but she can only do so much. But we will, we will keep pushing very hard on that, Camas is as well. I think the port will be joining us, maybe, maybe others. And we're in contact with our delegation. But I think it's important to press our advocacy in all three of these tiers. You know, we, we'd like them to not do it down the hill, leave it the way it is. Potentially undergrounding it would be better so that, you know, actually, I don't know if it's a, it's a secondary tier, but it is coming under the minimize-
Is it undergrounding all the way under the river? All the way over to Troutdale?
I don't know about that part. You know, there's some, there are giant towers already going across the river, so I don't, I don't know about that impact.
But they could throw lateral over the river and then over?
Yeah, they'd have to come up out of the ground and start to climb. I, I know they don't go, you know, they don't do that. So, I don't know what, I don't know what all the technical consequences would be, but we would like to see more rigorous analysis.
Because they haven't studied it.
Yeah, there you go.
Let's, before we get into more questions, let's, Dave finishes his presentation. So, if you can, break questions and hold him until he's done.
One more piece here, and that is I think we need to be pragmatic throughout the whole process and recognize that, that something may happen here that we don't want to happen. And we need to seek whatever mitigation we possibly can. And one of the things that we have articulated and one of the things that we're concerned about is what this visual impact to our community is going to do. As you know, we're a jewel here in terms of the, the visual aesthetic that we have. And although we have this facility right now, twice the height is going to impact more of our community than it currently does. Depending upon all the details and how that all works out, it can have an impact on the assessed value of groups of and individual properties. We're heavily dependent upon property tax revenue and if our assessed valuation goes down in any significant measure or even a little bit because of this, it'll have an impact on our ability to deliver core services. We haven't quantified that, we would like them to do that. And we would like to understand what the possible impact is financially to us and then how would they mitigate that? Is there an amenity that they could provide in the right-of-way? That would be a significant, a significant amenity for the community. That would potentially lessen the impact to values because it would be such a significant amenity. Don't know exactly what that would be, but you could imagine some of the things that might happen in a BPA right-of-way, partly flat, partly hillside. You know, recreation-type amenity comes to mind. I've heard folks talk about whether or not the BPA actually makes financial mitigation. I have no idea if that's really contemplated in a, in a mitigation under an EIS-type scenario. I, I, I'm not, I've not heard of it, but I, I don't want to be dismissive of it without some further research. So, that's kind of the tenor of our advocacy. And so, the next steps are for us to continue to press that, to formalize it into a very formal comment that will be made on behalf of the community. We were in partnership with Camas as we do it. They're equally bullish on the issue and although that one segment, right now at least, is not on the table, it's not the preferred alternative, they continue to stand by us with concerns about the Woodburn Hill and Goot Park area. Of course, they can formally only speak for Camas, but they're standing with us on this. So, we're very appreciative of that and we hope that our advocacy will, will have some kind of an impact. We'll look to our legislative delegation at the federal level and just continue to press the issue. And the comment period ends at the end of next month and then they pick what they're going to do. Timing of the project, I've heard things, a couple of years to do this whole thing. I don't know where, which side they start on, but starting in 14, ending up in 15, 16, in that range. So, it's, it's right around the corner.
If you bring up undergrounding the urban section, it seems appropriate to bring up undergrounding the existing two 230 KV lines. It's hard for me to see how we gain anything by undergrounding the 500 KV line and leaving the dual 230 KV towers in place.
Yeah, we just avoid the tall ones, but we keep the existing ones. There was a comment, there was a gentleman that commented that this was an opportunity to eliminate that visual impact, just as you say.
And the other thing, this, the engineer in me says, how deep do you have to dig the trench to underground a 500 KV line? That's, that's an interesting question because Woodburn Hill is mostly rock. You can't go 10 feet deep on most of, of Woodburn Hill without blasting.
Yeah, blasting, yeah. Yep, I'm sure you'll be very interested then in the, the appendix that treats the undergrounding. They get, get into quite a lot of detail there.
Does this make any difference to the airport? I mean, does this height of towers affect the plane patterns?
That is covered in the DEIS. When the towers get about 200 feet, there are some FAA regs, I believe they're FAA regs, that require the flashing lights and the orange balls on the lines. And you see that right now as it crosses the river. So, you would see that anywhere these new towers would get to that height. But I don't believe that the heights that we're talking about are compromising the flight path.
Neither for Portland, my understanding was even for Grofield, the general aviation, it didn't, it was far enough away from it that it didn't impact those.
Right, we're over in Troutdale.
The only airport that would be impacted would be Troutdale. I could comment on that. Troutdale pattern is flown at 1100 feet and it's not an issue.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Paul, I'd like to hear your thoughts. Undergrounding. That doesn't make sense to do it like this. I'd say okay.
Okay, moving to finance ordinance regarding utility rates.
Good evening.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, we'll try that again. Our agenda for the utility rate discussion tonight, we're going to talk about where we're at with the decrease in utility rates, adjusting the low income senior annual income thresholds, and then have a discussion on further rate reduction relief through the use of general fund reserves that council brought up last, well, in the past for us to bring forward. So, for the water and sewer rates, our capital facilities plans have been adjusted. We've worked with our, our consultant FCS to spread some of those capital projects over a longer period. And we're pending DOE approval on the sewer side, but the water side, I believe, has been approved. So, what that'll do to rates, the water rates won't be impacted until 2015, but it'll be a pretty big decrease from 13% to 3. And the sewer rates, we were actually able to do a little bit better than we've discussed even last week. Last week, we showed you very tentative numbers of 14, 11 and 9. And we're pleased to announce that FCS has confirmed that we're able to do, instead of 26 and a half percent increase this year, it's 13%. The 11% is down to 10 and 14 and the 11% in 15 is down to 8. So, we'll get into more details in a moment on the slides as to what that actually does to the annual, or the monthly, bi-monthly bills, once we get through some of this preliminary information. We're also, we didn't want to wait for all the information from Clark PUD with the low income assistance program. We're still working through some of those challenges with them. But we did want to be able to change existing policy for the low income seniors in the area. So, we've included in your packet in the draft ordinance, language changes to change the thresholds to the federal levels instead of having a flat amount in the ordinances for both stormwater and sewer. That way, we can link it to the federal rates. That way, they can be updated annually and we won't have to bring it forward every year. It'll just automatically increase to what the median income of Clark County is. We're proposing to use the federal two-person household, since this is just for low income seniors at this point, not low income families. And then we can adjust that later with the policy for our low income assistance program. The current, in the existing ordinance, we currently have two different thresholds for low income seniors, 15,000 or less. That income threshold will replace with the extremely low income level, which makes the new 2013 amount 16,650. So, that bumps it up a little bit to assist further low income seniors in the area. The current $20,000 threshold will be replaced with the very low income level, which changes that from 20,000 to 27,800. And again, this is just for the seniors in the area at the moment. So, back to the, to the actual rates, I didn't include 2013 and 2014 for water because we aren't proposing any changes. So, this is just for 2015. It shows what the prior 13% rate increase would have been. So, the 77.10 for single-family residents will now be 70, $70.28 bi-monthly for a savings bi-monthly of $6.82 on the water side. And then obviously, the outside city, we do have some folks that are attached to the water system that are outside city limits that have different rates. So, we just kind of put them all in there for, for your viewing pleasure. And then in addition, the multifamily usage as well. The rate will also change the high income levels, but, or the high volume water usages, but I didn't include that in the slides, but it is in your ordinance as exhibit A. For sewer, I did three different, since all three years are changing. Again, we're comparing the prior approved rates of 26.5%. We have a new rate of 13% for the bi-monthly decrease for all categories. And then again, the, the verbiage change for the seniors is in there. We're using the federal housing and urban development, I believe that's what HUD stands for. The ELIL is extremely low income level and the VIL is very low income level. 2014, again, we're not, we're comparing it to the prior adopted rates, so the decrease will be cumulative moving forward. So, the 10% is off of the 13% for the new proposed rates, but the 11% in the first column is still off of the 26 and a half percent. So, it is carrying forward in the de- in the decrease of column. And then for 15, it's 8%. So now that we've seen all these lovely slides, what does it really mean? The impact to the overall bill, again, at the top is the Currently Approved Rate Plan with the 13, 13, and 13 for water, 26.5, 11, and 11 for sewer, and then the 14.5 across the board for storm. With a total, excuse me, total minimum bi-monthly bill of $211.13, our proposed changes to the rates would be to decrease the sewer to the 13% increase, which takes the overall bill down to a minimum of 197.60, assuming that folks stay within their 10 units of water. So again, if you go over the 10 units, that is an additional charge. So the savings for 2013 is $13.53 bi-monthly. And as Councilmember McDaniel pointed out, the overall savings is roughly 6%. 2014, the savings is $16.15, and then 15 is additional due to the water, the water being included as well, for 38.44.
Are we aware of anything coming down the pipe at us from the federal or the state level, which would force us to raise rates again in order to do improvements, which are mandated by the feds or the state?
In, on the water and sewer side, I'm not aware specifically of any new regulations that are coming down that would impact our capital facilities plans beyond what we already have. On the stormwater side, that is still a work in progress. As you know, our stormwater utility is in its infancy. It's in its infancy in most municipalities. And just exactly how the Phase 2 regs are going to apply to us in Washington is being litigated in some cases and being tested at lower-level stages. So there is a real possibility that, and in fact, we're aware of, some ramping up that's already in front of us. They've just given us time to do it. So I wouldn't say there's anything new there in the next couple of years, but the future is uncertain in storm, still.
Okay, so we could have an impact on this, this plan right here.
On the storm piece, and you'll note that we, the capital plan in storm is not a significant plan yet. It's not a plan that delivers underground storm facilities for the entire community yet. There's some key projects that are identified, but it's primarily, it's a regulatory process in terms of how we monitor and track and all the different things we have to do for the environmental regs. We aren't making or proposing any changes on the storm site, partly because of the ambiguity and uncertainty that's facing us in that arena.
Back before I was on the council, Paul, you, you talked about fairness in the way that we finance improvements in the Water Department. And you talked about using bonds, because then the people that are getting the service actually pay the bond. And I didn't like that at the time, because I would avoid the interest if I could. On the other hand, I'm beginning to see your point.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up at that time. Thanks, Dave. I realize it's difficult to predict the future, but I, I'm concerned about the Obama administration's take on things like stormwater, and their emphasis on it. And so I wonder if, if we get into this and get hit with this, what's, what's going to be the impact? And I know there's no way to predict that, but I'm, I'm just wondering if it can knock all this into a cocked hat, and that's my concern. And I know you can't answer that. It's just, I raise it as a concern, and I'm not sure exactly what to do with it.
Well, I think it's always a concern of all of ours, whether it's coming from the federal level or coming from the state level. And we certainly have, at, at both levels, there are two different, really two different fronts to always be watching and always be wary of, is, is not only on the legislative side. Statewide, I think we've been in with probably between 20 and 25 legislators that are beginning today, not just ours, but from around the state. And pretty much the tenor is that none of them, doesn't matter what party they're from or anything along the way, none of them are envisioning anything else that is going to happen in the next couple of years that are going to impact the local, local governments in regard to these type of issues. That said, EPA also operates, or Ecology also operates separately from the legislature in its rulemaking and some of the things that they can do administratively. So I haven't seen yet, I know they made the announcement that the head of Ecology was leaving to become, not the, head of the Finance Office? Administrator Servant's last day, I believe, is this Wednesday, and he transfers into the administration another role. So what role any new administrator for Ecology is going to play in trying to keep all of their staff in line, and/or actually reducing some of the requirements that we have on us now, or giving us some other options in there, I'd, I'd say is anybody's guess.
Well, there are a lot of areas in which local, local governments can push back against the state and the feds. Environmental areas doesn't seem to be one of them. That's, that's a dictat that comes down.
It, it certainly has not in the last good number of years. And we're seeing the, the effects of that now.
And, and that's my concern, and I welcome those new legislators. And I don't care what party they're in, as long as they're in favor of getting a grip on this and being realistic. I'm for them.
In the rates, is there something in the structure to change the 10 units to bring that down, charge less at a smaller amount and more at a higher amount of usage?
This ordinance does not do that. This ordinance would keep our exact same rate model. But we are in the beginning stages of procuring the professional services to do what we refer to as the cost-of-service study. And that study is the context in which the model that we use for our rates would be evaluated and reevaluated and redesigned. One of the most significant components of that would be what's the base charge for residential customers. But it's not the only component, and you have to, you have to look at your whole model and all of your customer classes together. Because if you make, if you make a change to how you charge in one customer class, it will affect how you charge the other customer classes, because at the end of the day, it's, it still has to balance. So that's going to be undertaken right away. And in fact, in the recitals to the ordinance, when you have a chance to peruse those further, you'll note that the council acknowledges that very issue and acknowledges that the city is moving forward to address that. I think it's safe to say that you will see, in the results of that analysis, a lowering of the base rate for residential customers. I don't know exactly what it would be, but I'm sure our consultant will make that type of a recommendation. And we've heard that before, knew that was likely to be one component of that when we moved forward.
Looking for them to bring that back, hopefully by mid-year, hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully. I like to be bullish, and sometimes, you know, it takes longer than I, my initial ambition, but.
We can certainly have it in place for next year's rates, though.
Yes.
You could potentially change rates again this year, once, once they go through that, once you all have a chance to evaluate that, chime in on it, select your best third, whatever you think the best way is to do that. And then the consultant going back again to double-check that, to make sure that all of that, how it meshes with our industrial, how it meshes with business rates, and also our debt service, all still makes sense to our underwriters.
Before we do that, though, I'd like to have at least some kind of community conversation, because people are going to be getting their first bill here at the end of this month. And if we change the, how we do rates in July, and high-water users suddenly get, you know, hit really hard with the big bills and low-water users, you know, they get, they get the benefit. But I think that's something that we need to put, have to give some notice to the community before we did that. And I think that might be done in the context of a annual, like, and that's just my thought.
Couple of questions. Have we been in contact with bond counsel at all on any of this?
Question for you, are, the questions you have now, are they on what Jennifer's covered or what she has yet to cover?
I think that's relevant.
Well, I think it's relevant to what, if we're going to change the rates, because part of the reason we set the rates as we did.
I'm just talking about your question at this point in your presentation.
If you want to postpone it, that's fine.
I think, I think it fits. We have been working with FCS, and those are some of the, in the, there's a massive spreadsheet that we've been using, but those are some of the test fields that we're making sure we're in compliance with our bond payments and, and debt requirements. So that is still factored into the rates. Basically, it was moving the, the projects out a little bit further to where the next debt issuance isn't till later, that we're able to smooth the, the increases out a little bit further.
Yeah, because these rates are very much tied to that.
Correct.
To that bond contract.
The contract doesn't specify that, the amount of our rates. It says what we have to have in revenues and what we have to cover. So we just had to reanalyze that in the deferred context, and we meet all of those tests, so we're good.
And just as long as, you know, if bond counsel was going to be unhappy, I would like to know early rather than later.
Yeah, and that's certainly not a position.
Do we have an estimate as to how long it's going to take to do the cost-of-service study? What's your kind of finger-in-the- wind best guess?
I, I'm trying to remember what we were told before. Trevor, do you remember what they said before? How, how long it might take to do cost-of-service? Was it two to three months?
90 to 120.
Okay, three to four. I always try to be a little faster, but.
Do we have any idea on how long it would take Ecology to approve the wastewater treatment capital improvement plan changes?
I would hesitate to venture what their approval timing might be. We are in contact with them. We have sort of a verbal.
We've been waiting daily for it.
But, but in other words, it's imminent, or we're thinking it's months out?
No, we've been waiting daily for it. I don't believe that there's anybody that can tell you when Ecology's going to come back with anything.
I don't have confidence that it's imminent. I wouldn't want to tell you, I think that's imminent. There are some, and we have to continue with our advocacy there. I get the context for your question, is what is the risk of adopting this ordinance, lowering the rates, only to have Ecology come back and say, "No, you can't punt some of these projects. You have to keep them on the track that you're on." I think in our evaluation, the risk is not significant based on our conversations and based upon the number of experts that have, the one that did the very exhaustive analysis that said, you know, you could push on this a little bit. And then in the feasibility study, a sort of a, not a detailed peer review, but a sort of a cursory peer review was done by professional engineers. They concurred, and then our own city engineer, of course, is concurring. So we, we have a high level of confidence. But that is an agency where it would be remiss to try to, to tell you it's coming right down the pipe. They're looking at what's happening at Pendleton. Pendleton might be coming offline. They're looking at a couple of the other projects that we have. Our calculations tell us that the timing that we're looking at is still prudent, because it's not that far. It's pushed out until 18.
Yeah, because the capital improvement plan is based on population growth estimates of 2006, which are hardly what I would call current.
Right. The Pendleton discharge, if they take their pre-treatment offline, would be significant, but it's not beyond the capacity. Some of the details around the third clarifier, which is the key component that's getting pushed, and then some of the other things that have to be done when you do a third clarifier, are around redundancy. So some of it's capacity, some of it's redundancy. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be recommending this to you if we didn't feel a strong level of confidence that it's still prudent, because we have to, we have to be able to meet our financial commitments, our bond covenants. We've undertaken the debt. We've made commitments to the bondholders. And we certainly wouldn't want to put ourselves in a position where we'd be recommending something risky to you. But it's not, it's not stamped and signed.
Understood. And then my other comment is actually on, on stormwater. My memory is that NPDES, National Pollution Elimination, Discharge Elimination System, which was passed and applied to the state of Washington a decade ago, applied only to what were called Stage 1 cities until a handful of years ago. The rulemaking process on stormwater is frankly glacially slow. And it seems like if, even if EPA started a rulemaking process tomorrow, it would take a year for them to go through the rulemaking process, at which point they would hand it to the states, and it would take at least another year for the states to go through rulemaking. So I, I don't really see that even if there were significant changes at the federal level, that they would percolate down here until 15 or later. The state is a different problem. Some of the things that had come out of Ecology two years ago are very difficult. In fact, they completely shut down development in Clark County for months. Not a single building permit was issued. And, but as the mayor pointed.